We have eight, so therefore, we do have a quorum. The legislature is back in session. I know yesterday we had left with a discussion with legal counsel and to give legal counsel and the movers of the amendment to come up with a language, I guess, that would be proffered this morning, so.
That was a subsequent discussion, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I think that there was still the discussion that was for the Senator Rector.
So Senator Rector had the floor yesterday? Senator Rector?
This was in reference to the amendment that I was -- the last amendment I'm making.
So Senator Rector, then, are you -- since you still have the floor? And we are on Section 3 of the bill, of the amended version of the bill? Of the amendment. Okay.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Yes, you know, subsequent to this amendment and for the entire amendment, we all went home and did our homework. And while there's lots of problems with the amendment and bill, this amendment specifically makes this pay raise subject to legal action. And what I have in front of me is a case that was heard in 1988, some of us may remember this, November 22, 1988, where Judge Weeks ruled that, basically, if you give one Gov. Guam employee a raise, you have to give every Gov. Guam employee the same raise proportionally. And that's what led to the 54-40. And with this legislation, with this amendment, it's going to definitely do that. And this isn't the way we're supposed to do these things. Currently, we're under study and figuring out what the fair and equitable pay for Gov. Guam employees is. And we've already -- this body has already contracted or allowed the contracting of this to happen, this study to go on. If we do it this way, it's not going to be right for anybody. And that would be my concern. But then again, you pass it, the lawyers will be happy, and I suppose every Gov. Guam employee will be happy because everybody will get a raise. But the problem is, is they might not get the raise that they deserve. So I stand opposed to this amendment. Thank you.
On the amendment, are there any speakers? Senator Blasch, you're standing up. Does that mean that you would like to speak?
It's my amendment, ma'am. It's my amendment.
So that's why I'm asking if there's anyone who would like to speak on your amendment. Senator Ada, you would like to speak on the amendment?
Madam Speaker, I think the -- all the amendment is saying is to approve the rules and regulations, but it doesn't automatically authorize the adjustments in the compensation. If you recall, in the bill, in Section 2, it still requires that management is to go back and to review the positions again, to review the compensation schedule, to provide the opportunity and the mechanism for the employees to be able to at least question, why was that particular job position, why was his job position only given a certain rating and not higher, which of course then would have directly impacted his compensation level? And at that time, then, once those questions have been answered, then management can compile all these findings and submit it to the board and say that -- and make its recommendations as to any further adjustments or whatever. So there's really that one more step that the bill proposes that needs to be taken before, in fact, the pay raises are to be put into effect. In addition to that, there's also another provision which says that we can compile all this information, but you cannot implement it until the money is available. So until management has identified, I believe it's on Section 2, 2/6, says the implementation of the new space scale level will not go into effect until the Board of Directors has approved a financial plan to fund the proposed pay scale. So there's nothing automatic here in, you know, submitting this over to the compiler of laws. So, you know, there's still a little bit more scrutiny that needs to be made to make sure that things are in order. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome, Senator Ada. Are there any other speakers on the amendment, on the Blasch Amendment? There being none, I'm going to give the opportunity to the mover of the amendment to close. Senator Blasch?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. You know, Madam Speaker, I have to echo the sentiments expressed by the previously retired speaker and the good author of the original bill, that this section does not give carte blanche to the pay raise. There's still the process that has to be completed. And if the issue was the pay raise, where was the concern with that in the earlier amendments that were proffered and passed? It provides a mechanism so that all the positions can be considered, so that all the factors, Madam Speaker, can be considered before the decision by the Board. The bill in itself was very clear in that there was the exclusion of Appendix 8, but with the further instructions for management and for the port to conduct the study with all of its employees, based on the criteria set by the enabling legislation. And so we need to separate that, ma'am, because in the bill, it does separate it. And if you look, and I'm going to repeat, as was brought up by the good senator from Mingelo, in Section 2, items basically 1 through 7, provides the mechanism for that process to occur. What this bill does is gives them the authority to make that, to do that, for lack of a better word, study. And there's further, there's also a further acknowledgement that it will not be implemented unless there's also a fiscal plan. So that still has to be considered too as well. All this section does is just recognize and approve the rules and the regulations, of which, mind you, Madam Speaker, is not new. It's just amended. It's not to say that the commercial port never had rules and regulations. It had. It is amended. And that's what this section does. Nothing more. And so I ask my colleagues to consider this. This does not, this does not do what is claimed by the opposer to the amendment. This just approves the rules and regulations. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Senator Blasch. Since there is an objection to the amendment, I'm going to call for the vote. Those in favor, please raise your hand. Motion fails. On -- let me see, where are we now? Senator Blasch, you still have the floor?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I am, though, that was the -- can I ask for a 32nd recess, ma'am?
Okay, brief recess. On Section 3. The legislature's back in session. On the main motion, I'd like to recognize Senator Guthardts.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker, and good morning, colleagues. You know, I thought about this bill all night. And the reason was because, of course, of the purpose of the bill, to authorize compensation and benefit adjustments to the Port Authority for personnel. And I thought about it in the context of two things. One is the unique mission of the port. And secondly, the overall aspects of our public personnel system in the government of Guam. Initially, my thinking was that, here we go, we're going to do something for one agency and not recognize our career employees throughout this government who've been waiting long and hard for improvements in compensation. And I did a little research, and it's very clear, Madam Speaker, that the pay scales of the employees of the government of Guam have fallen way behind. Regardless of where they work, over the last 15 years, we have not really seen an adjustment in pay that corresponds to the costs of living on our island. And we're seeing the result of that right now, where many of our employees in the professional ranks are leaving us, going into the federal civil service system on Guam or elsewhere, joining the military, or going into the private sector, particularly with some of the larger companies that are coming to Guam that need talented people, that know their specific areas of responsibility and can help them, faith them, the thing that we call Gov. Guam. Now, normally, I would not be supportive of a pay adjustment in a particular agency without looking out for the entire government workforce. But I also know our government backwards. And I know that unless we put pressure on the government of Guam in general and on this body in general, we're never going to see a pay adjustment for all civil servants in the government of Guam. Yes, we have the Hays Study that supposedly has started the process, but we're all seeing extreme pressures on the public sector to maintain, identify, and enhance the keeping of our talented, skilled, and professional employees in our government. With the enhancements expected at the Port Authority of Guam and the potential competition that could come from the Navy to meet some of its personnel needs, and having talked to the Jigpo Office and other military offices on Guam, their goal is to hire locally and not to bring people from off-island if they can avoid it to fill federal positions. They are recruiting now, you've been reading in the papers how they've recruited from the university students who haven't even graduated yet from the School of Business and Public Administration into their internship program, starting them out as interns with about $34,000 a year. When they finish the program in two and a half years or three years, they'll move up to GS-11s and make anything from $40,000 to $50,000, $60,000 a year. We need to do something to try to retain what we have, and this is an example, this bill is an example, I think, of trying to do that. I want to put pressure on this government. I want to put pressure on this body to do a pay adjustment across the board at the right moment for everybody. Last year, we acted on the law enforcement positions. We had to do that, although I understand the governor did not include the adjustment in the current budget request for 210. Oh, they did. So they made a change and they did include it, or they did not? They did not, according to Speaker Ban. I'm not sure how we're going to handle that. But this is a similar situation where if you don't do something, you're going to lose the talent pool. So I rise to support the bill with the understanding that we are going to ensure that this government does the right thing for all the employees in the public sector, and that we do it quickly with a sense of urgency and realism about what we're facing over the next few years and the potential for losing what we have and what we need in the future. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome, Senator Guthardts. On the motion, the main motion, Senator Palacios, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I'd like to open an amendment to the bill itself, and the amendment is being passed out right now. A few more seconds, and then I will begin to -- and my amendment actually would have to do, would amend Page 2, Item Number 2, beginning on line 21.
Before you proceed, I'm sorry, but we have not received it up here. The clerk should always have a copy and the legal counsel prior to passing them out because they need to be able to keep track of all the amendments. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Sorry for that.
And the amendment, my amendment simply is to add, after the word annotated on line 23, Page 2, of course, annotated, comma, inclusive of the positions for port police officers, notwithstanding the Department of Administration current study for law enforcement and public safety positions. Madam Speaker, I remember when the 20th Guam Legislature passed a law that mandated DOA to restart in public safety and law enforcement compensation. That has not been submitted to this legislature. It's been long overdue. Nevertheless, the 29th Guam Legislature, through the Isidaki Bill, went ahead and not wait for the study and actually implemented 40% pay adjustment for all law enforcement officers, intentionally making it a four-year installment plan, 10% for the next four years. And the reason for that is that should the study show that the police officers of another public safety position would be lower than 40%, then of course, the 40% will stay. But if it should be higher than 40%, then the study recommendation will be adopted at that point. And the reason we implemented that increment is so that by the time the study is done, I think that there will still be maybe two more increments pending, at which point then probably some adjustment can be made at that point. I brought that up because the port police positions are included in that. And it is my understanding that despite the current study going on now internal to the Port Authority, that even though tentatively, tentatively, they agree that the port police officer's position perhaps qualify for the compensation adjustment under their study, which is the Port Authority's study, according to the legal counsel, the port police position would not be considered because there would be a conflict with the current law that actually mandated DOA to do the study. So essentially, this amendment is actually saying, Port Authority, go ahead with the study, include the police, and then make a determination. That's essentially what it is. Whatever is the determination, whether it's tentative or final or what, is actually not the purpose of this bill, or rather, this proposal. I'm not arguing to qualify them or to justify them. I'm just saying, don't leave them out of the study. Do not not consider inclusion if they should merit it, simply because there's a separate study going on. And in fact, the intent of the legislature for waiting for the study, a DOA, is simply actually, the actual intent there is so that if there's a study, regardless of that point, we didn't foresee that there would be a Port Authority study, but should there be a study, a validly conducted study showing the level of compensation, then that would be considered at that point. And I would venture to say that the Port Authority study is a valid study. It would apply for some positions. And again, the only single item here of this amendment is to, please do not not include them in the study. Please include them in the study, and then make your determination at that point. Never mind that DOA study is still pending submission to the legislature. And I hope that with that amendment, then it's up to them now then to go ahead and make a consideration. I have no problem with whatever would be the final determination of the Port Authority study. Just, I just want the police positions to be included, because that is the only problem with respect to this amendment that I'm trying to cure. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome, Senator Palacios. So on the Palacios amendment, is there anyone who would like to speak on the amendment? There being none, then are there any objections to the amendment? None, then the motion carries. Senator Tenor, you're recognized then on the main motion.
Thank you. Good morning, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I'm moving an amendment at this point to amend legislative findings, and if you'll allow me, I'll read. "Imena Trenton La Lesho Trangwahan finds that the Port Compensation and Classification Plan Study has analyzed and reviewed 176 positions within the port." And by the way, this will be a new paragraph at the end of legislative findings. "Further, legislature finds that public law 29-24 defines maritime positions 'unique to port operations' and certified technical and professional positions in part as positions with multi-skill qualification requirements and with specific maritime knowledge and skills and technical and professional qualifications, which are unique and critical to the port operations and which are found in no other government entity which is not a port of entry." "Further, La Lesho Trangwahan finds that 176 positions analyzed all are multi-skilled and require specific maritime knowledge and skills and technical professional qualifications, which are unique and critical to the port's operations and which are found in no other government entity and which is not a port of entry within the meaning of public law 29-24." "These requirements include, but are not limited to, undergoing maritime security training on the maritime security levels and port facility security plan as mandated by the Maritime Transportation Security Act of 2002, MTSA, the United States Corps Guard IS-100 and IS-200 training, orientation on port security plan and Maritime Security Act." "The legislature finds, therefore, that 176 positions are maritime positions 'unique to the port operations' and certified technical and professional positions, which shall be included in the Compensation and Classification Plan." Madam Speaker, there are Madam Speaker, there are certain things that happen within the security of our nation and the security of our ports of entry, and specifically, the Port Authority is requiring and has raised the level of skills, knowledge, and abilities of all the employees who are there. All those employees, classified and unclassified, have undergone training to make sure that our national security and that their abilities to protect our national security have the integrity that we all need. These employees all possess those skills, and the review that was done and the analysis of the Port Authority employees are such that these employees are distinct based on the conclusions that were given to me in a conversation that we've had with many of the professionals down there, and of course, one of the gentlemen that I have a high regard for, Senator Frank Blasch, my fellow Twenty-third Hurdsman, who has many, many years in homeland security, understands the nature of the security implications of our island, and also has been an integral part of the discussion that deals with the Port Authority operations, and how those skills and abilities are and have raised the actual level of not just our homeland security, but the compensation that should be given to these individuals and what distinguishes them from those other positions which are similar to but not yet identical to the same positions. We know that the Port, I'm sorry, the Guam Power Authority, Guam Water Works Authority have similar authorizations which have been given to them to be able to raise their compensation in order to, as was previously mentioned by the good gentle lady from Anguilla, to actually increase the level of compensation so that we're not losing people who have that skill, knowledge, and ability within our government, and especially at the Port Authority, to be able to protect the homeland, to protect Guam, to be able to understand the security and maritime-specific information which makes it possible for us to enjoy the economic activity, the infusion of economic goods that come into the port, and to be able to maintain our security. This legislative finding amendment, Madam Speaker, would allow for all those positions which have been deemed to be a higher level of responsibility, a higher level of skill, to be receiving the same compensation based on the analysis that was done of the Port Authority. So, Madam Speaker, I ask my colleagues to look at this from the standpoint of the true nature of the job that is given to these individuals, and the training that goes along with those jobs is essential to make sure that our security, that our homeland security, that the security of Guam, and of course, the technical and very intrinsic nature of their jobs is consistent with all of the training that's articulated in the last two sentences, or second to the last sentence, including this amendment. Because in the bill, it also talks about passing on and making sure that this compensation goes to all classified and, I'm sorry, classified and unclassified employees. This goes to the merit of that section and talks about the fact that these employees, all of which have received that training, have a higher level and are distinguished as a result of that training from their counterparts in other agencies of the government of Guam. So I ask my colleagues to please look this favorably, to include the compensation to those Port Authority employees because they have been determined, they have been deemed to actually receive these skills, and that they have a level of proficiency, skill, knowledge, and ability which justifies an increase in the salary based on the plan that was submitted. This was my question, Madam Speaker.
Senator Tenorio, I need for you to clarify because you said add a new third full paragraph to Section One, and we're dealing now with the Blasch amendment which replaced the Adda version. So if you look at the bill on page two, the third on line seven, there is a third paragraph there. So what then will be your intent? Well, you're going to, you've got to look at this carefully because on line seven, it talks about one hundred and four positions reviewed by them, and then your amendment saying the same thing, but it finds that the compensation plan was analyzed and reviewed, one hundred and seventy-six, so there's a conflict there. So can I have you work, please, with Senator Blasch and Senator Adda on this amendment? We'll take a brief recess.
The legislature is back in session. We're going to take a lunch recess and be back, please, at 1:00. The legislature is back in session. We left off with Senator Tenorio on an amendment. I want to make sure that everybody has now the combined amendments all in one new bill now? Everyone has a copy of that, right? Nobody's saying anything?
Yes, we have it all.
Yes, everyone has it, okay. And everyone has a copy of Senator Rector's amendment?
Who?
Okay, so Senator, I mean, Rector. Senator Tenorio, you're going to kill me! What do we say? How do we say that?
I don't have access to his Facebook or his Twitter account or anything else. So how can you say...
Okay, bad, bad, bad. I made a mistake. I apologize profusely.
All right. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
So, Senator Tenorio, you are recognized.
I want to move to withdraw the original amendment.
Okay. And the motion then to withdraw his amendment without any objection, so ordered.
Madam Speaker, I'd like to move the amendment which is in front of all the members now. And it replaces the third paragraph of the legislative intent. The same exact language with a couple of grammatical changes, but it's, you know, rather than redundant, just remove redundant comments, but essentially the same. And for the sake of time, Madam Speaker, I don't think I need to repeat the entire amendment with the justification for it. I think I did that well this morning. So I ask my colleagues to please support this so that we can, in fact, make sure that those people who are justifiably to be paid based on their actual skills, knowledge, and ability are consistent with the plan and the analysis that was done, are, in fact, compensated in accordance to what my comments were previously this morning. So thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome, Senator Tenorio. And what it is, is that his amendment then will replace the third paragraph, which is on page two, from lines seven to lines 18. Are there any objections? Anyone like to speak on it? Senator Pangolinan and then Senator Palacios.
This is Masim, Madam Speaker. You know, Madam Speaker, I continue to follow all the discussion and listen intently, and every time I hear something, I go back and try to read what the original intent of the legislation was. And in this case, of course, it all dates back to the legislation introduced by the late Senator Antonio M. Pincot in terms of understanding the operations of the port and its dedication to the employees of the port. And while I don't have any debate of whether or not the legislature can do this, you know, I think that, for me, when I go back to think about what Speaker M. Pincot was trying to accomplish and what this does, it definitely is not the same thing. And in adopting this, I didn't want it to let it go unchallenged, because this basically, to me, says that Speaker M. Pincot did not know what he was doing in the original legislation of identifying these maritime positions that are unique to the port. I think we all know he had a long history of involvement with the port and its employees, and that he understood that. As a matter of fact, you know, when he passed away, they actually went through the port in terms of his funeral procession, because that's how close he was to the port and its employees. And he understood that, and he wanted to be fair to those individuals at the port who worked hard and were responsible for moving the cargo from ship to shore to store. And that these people needed to be recognized for the special work and talents that they have that are unique to those port operations. And that he knew that while everyone is an integral member of the port family, not every position at the port was unique to port operations. I think he understood that. And what this does is, it says that that thinking is completely false now, and now everything at the port is, you know, unique to the port. And I don't think that was his intention. And putting this together, putting this and replacing everything, to me, kind of, I just kind of want to defend my good friend. And I know it's not meant in that fashion in terms of what this is, because I think what this is, is trying to satisfy everybody at the port. And yes, we all want to do that. We all want to satisfy everyone. We all believe that everyone in this government, you know, no matter what position they're in, work hard, earn the money they pay, and in a lot of cases, underpaid for the work they perform and the dedication that they have towards their job and in service to the people of Guam. But what we were trying to do in the original legislation as introduced by Speaker M. Pincot was, we know that we couldn't do all that, that we couldn't give everybody, but we needed to be strategic in terms of targeting those positions and making sure those people receive the compensation they deserve for the work that they did and the special talents and the unduplicated skills that they have in performing their tasks in regards to every other position in the government of Guam. And this just wipes it all out. This wipes out that whole thinking. And while we may do this, we may have the power in this body to say that white is blue, and for the sake of implementing laws, that white is blue. We have in this body the power to, as we all joke every once in a while, stop the clock. That if we needed to act in a certain day and a certain time and was critical to doing it before that day, we can by motion in this body say, "We're stopping the clock." But it doesn't stop time. So we kind of fool ourselves, you know, when we say that white is blue and we're going to go and do it as blue. It's still white, but for the purpose of what we want to achieve, it becomes blue. But the reality is, it's still white. The reality is, we can make a motion to stop the clock, and we stop counting the minutes, but the time does not stop. So in this bill, and with this, I know in its intent, and that's probably why I'm even a little bit more concerned about it, because it's in the intent. If it was in the operation of law, okay, we have that power, but it's in the intent. And the intent wipes out all of the thinking and, to me, what the late Speaker M. Pincot felt was necessary in order to reward the people of the Port Authority of Guam for the work that they do and the special skills that they have in performing that work. And now that we have done this, and now that we're doing this, it means that those individuals are not going to be able to get the pay they deserve and the increase, because we have expanded it, or this body wants to expand it, so much to cover everyone that there's not enough money to even give one single employee a raise, and that we're going to have to wait. We're going to have to wait on those positions that we have all agreed upon when we did the original bill, that we have to do something immediate for these individuals, for people like the gantry drivers. There's no other gantry that operates in the government of Guam than at the Port Authority of Guam. We have to do it for the harbor master. There's nobody else with the skills of managing the traffic of the ships, because there's no other harbor on Guam. We have to do it, we want to do it, for the stevedoring foreman, because there's no other job in the government of Guam that requires those stevedoring skills. So those people, which was meant to be covered by this legislation, now have to wait. We can't give them a raise, because there's not enough money. Yet those are the people that we wanted to do so, that the late Speaker M. Pincot felt that for the sake of port operations and the critical skills needed there, we needed to keep these guys in. It wasn't like, "We're not going to give raises to anybody else, but we've got to deal with these critical positions first." Because when they, when we deal with them, we can ensure ourselves that those positions that are only going to be unique to those port operations and those people stay in the port and continue their dedication and service to the people of Guam and the port of Guam, that there, us keeping them there means that we can expand the port operations, grow the port operations, so that the other people who are doing the job at the port that supports the entire port operations are going to get a raise. It's just that we can't afford to do everyone now, so we've got to do these critical positions now with the money that we have. And what we're doing with this is saying, "Nobody gets it." Because, as you know, as has been testified on this floor, we're going to have that the effect of this is an initial, initial $2.4 million raise in tariffs that have to be increased in order to support the pay raises for the first small increment of getting the pay scale up to the level that we feel is necessary to support operations and keep critical personnel there. And so, again, while I don't have any argument that the legislature can do this and say all this, I just, I have a little, I'm being a little nostalgic here, a little protective of the memory of my good friend. By doing this, I think, I just don't want to say that he just, he didn't know what he was doing, that because of all these things now, those things were incorrect. They were not. They are the basis for why we're here, and they are the basis for maintaining the critical skills that are unduplicated in the performance of jobs at the port that you will not find anywhere else. And it is in recognition of the contributions that those people make to the overall operation of the port that will ensure that continued efficiency and talent remains at the port so that everybody else can benefit. So that when these people are rewarded for the job they do and the efficiencies are built in, that we will increase revenue without increasing costs. That's the idea, that when we do these things and give these people these incentives, that we will be able to increase operations, increase revenues at the port, give the other individuals the pay raise, and not raise the cost to the people of Guam. That is the idea behind what Speaker M. Pincot was trying to do. And I agree with that idea, and I think that idea can work if we stick to it. But because of whatever reason, this body in this time and in this place wants to erase all that. And I just want to state for the record... And I just wanna state for the record that I don't want that erased. I want that to be the conscious decision of this body, that when we're doing these things, that we are saying those things didn't matter, or those things were wrong, or times have changed and all that. And I don't believe that to be the fact and the set of facts of the circumstances for the implementation of this proposal today. We are going to have to, because of the decision we're making, increase cost to everyone. I mean, I saw the economic impact statements. How can it be a positive, negative impact cost? I don't know what that means. Even the experts are telling us, this is not true. But we say it is true because we say so. And I say we have that power to do it. But I don't think, for me, that it makes it so. And so, in, I'm not opposing this, I'm just speaking on my perception from my history here, in terms of the discussions that have preceded the actions we are taking today, of what was envisioned, what Speaker M. Pincot and I thought about in him drafting that legislation. We had many discussions on this, because I was trying to convince him to go one way, and he was trying to convince me to go the other way. And so, it's not like, you know, I'm just talking out of turn here. I'm telling you, I understood fully, because he took the time to explain to me what he was doing and why he thought it needed to go this way, and why he thought that we couldn't do and we shouldn't, at least at that time, and how, just do it across the board, and why he thought if we did it his way, or with how he envisioned, that it will eventually mean, and it won't be five years or 10 years, that it'll mean then, that we can then place the efficiencies of the operations of the port with the additional skills and talent that we retain by the policy that we're trying to put in place, that we can improve port operations, we can increase revenues, we can increase salaries for the other positions that share in the mission of the port and accomplishing its mission of efficiently moving cargo from ship to shore to store. And doing this, I think, in my, in my opinion, says that, you know, that that wasn't so, that that, I just wanted to record to state, even if it's just in the legislative intent, that I agree with what he was looking at, I agree with what he thought was the proper way, and this says all of that is not so, because it does wipe it all out, you know? And that's, that's just, and that's just for me, you know? And that's just for me. But I want to state for the record that I know what the intent was, I know that if we do it, and we all just kinda, you know, pitch in and do it that way, that it will result in what we're trying to achieve today at this time, which we're not achieving. Because again, we're doing this so that everybody can get a pay raise, but we've, because we're doing it so that everybody can get one, nobody gets one. Nobody gets a pay raise until we increase the cost of operating the port and the cost of moving goods from ship to shore to store, and the people of Guam pay for that before anybody gets a pay raise, 'cause that's exactly what this means. And that was a big concern of Speaker M. Pincot, its impact on the, how the port and how efficiently it operates, and its impact on the families and the people of Guam who end up paying for it in the end. Just take a look, when Mattson decided to buy those cranes, they didn't say, I'm gonna absorb the cost of the crane, 'cause it's gonna make me more efficient. So I'm willing to invest in the cranes and take it out of my bottom line, because I'm concerned about the people of Guam. No. Mattson said, I wanna be more efficient, I'm gonna go invest in the cranes, and I'm gonna make sure that the people that I get repaid first. So I'm just gonna tag on a container surcharge, whether you like it or not. And don't think that that's coming out of Mattson's pockets now, no way. That's gonna come out of the people of Guam's pockets, because Mattson is increasing their costs. I think, in my opinion, and I think Speaker M. Pincot was right, that if we did this by increasing the efficiencies, by rewarding the people who are very critical to those operations, that we can increase the efficiencies down there and be able to put those pay raises in without increasing the tariffs to the extent that we're gonna have to of over $2.4 million for the first small increment of getting up there before we make any improvements. In other words, we're not gonna improve anything at all until we increase rates to pay for those improvements. If we did it the other way, I think we can make some improvements, build some efficiencies, increase throughput, and then pay for it from the increased revenue without having to pay and put that burden on the entire people of Guam and the families of Guam. That was a big concern, in terms of how he was approaching his thinking on this whole thing. And so, again, that is really my comment, and it's probably even more for me relevant because it's in the intent part and not in the law. Because if it was in the law, I'd say, oh, Speaker M. Pincot fully understands legislature and its powers, and if the legislature says it's blue, it can be white, but when it comes to then implementing it, it better be implemented as if it was blue, you know? And the reason why I just haven't spoken up, you know, too many times in this whole debate, you know, is the other thing that he always reminded, he always used to love to tell us, and yourself as well, was to tell us, little talk, little mistake, plenty talk, plenty mistake. And I'll tell you, you know, I don't think what Speaker M. Pincot was trying to achieve with the original intention of the law was a mistake. I don't believe it was so. And I think this legislative intent change tells me that it was a mistake, and I just wanna say, I don't believe it so, and I wanted to state that for the record. This is Massey, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome, Senator Pangolinan. Senator Palacios on the amendment.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I rise in support of the amendment. The amendment actually clarifies where and how employees at the Port Authority can be considered to have possessed some, I guess, unique skills and qualifications with respect to their employment down at the Cabras Island. And it has to do actually on line, beginning on line seven, where it says there that they're actually required to have specific maritime knowledge and skills. And then there it says that requirement includes but not limited to undergoing maritime security training on the maritime security levels and facility security plan. I happen to have a personal experience in this, I know of a private security agency that provide contract security down at, one of the businesses down at the port, which is actually the Casamar, and even contracted securities and outside, the private employees are required actually, to actually undergo training and be familiarized with what is so, what is called facility security plan. And there are three levels of security with respect to the, what is called a MARSEC, Maritime Security Level. And of course, MARSEC Level One is the normal level, but when it goes up to MARSEC Level Three, that's a clampdown of the operation, everybody is checked with. This requires, of course, specific knowledge and actual training as to what to do during this time of very heightened security threats, emergency. And those are not required of any other assignment, the marshals are not required to have that, the police officers, the correction officers are not required to have that, but everyone that works down there and whose permanent job is down there, and they're required to have this TIC, the Transportation Worker Identification Card, which I said yesterday that it actually is good for five years, and it's a preclearance, pre-security clearance of every person working there, so that when they work there, they can then move about unescorted. There are still people that can go there, but with escort, people that go there as customers on a occasional basis. And that's why I like to repeat that, I remember very well the Coast Guard Security Guard, United States Coast Guard, IS-100, and of course, IS-200 Training Orientation. I participated in one of these training, leading up, of course, preparation to the implementation for the first time of the, of the security plan. And so, again, that, 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 that training is more than eight hours, it's actually, and by the way, it's a recurring training as, as changes take place. And it's, it's actually sponsored by, by the Coast Guard in conjunction with the Transportation Security. And they have to attend this, I think they have a Monday training of all facility security officer. Every vendor, including the port, cell, corporation, mobile, they each would have to designate and have to train one full-time so-called facility security officer to implement all these things. And that's what I like to share with this body, and I guess this amendment really clarifies the uniqueness of being an employee that actually spent full time down at the Cabras Island. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome, Senator Palacios. On the amendment, Senator Blas.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I rise in support of the amendment as well. And I'd like to be able to spend some time right now to allay some of the concerns that were brought, and valid concerns, you know? But, you know, the same token, I wanna be able to stand here as not only a co-sponsor but a co-author for Public Law 2924, who worked with Speaker M. Pincot on the legislation, who had the many discussions with Speaker M. Pincot on the legislation, that I stand here and say that what this body intends to do, or what this body is deliberating to do, is in line with what Speaker M. Pincot, and I discussed. And, you know, one of the reasons why I can say this, Madam Speaker, is, you know, first off, Speaker Antonio M. Pincot always thought of the port as a family. It was his family. He always thought that every worker in the Port Authority of Guam, now the Jose de León Gero Port, was critical, was crucial, was vital, was important to the mission of the port, and that every member of the port had their roles and the duties and responsibilities in ensuring that that port operates. And, you know, I remember clearly in some of the discussions that we were having, you know, one of the things that I was talking to the speaker about back then was, some of the work that I did prior to becoming elected a senator as the Homeland Security Advisor, were some of the discussions we were having nationwide as Homeland Security Advisors, of some of the protective and security measures that would probably be needed to be implemented in our ports of entry, more specifically here. And I remember one of the concerns that was brought up back then was that there was going to be trainings, certifications, you know, that would, in a lot of cases, drastically change the way ports operate, not only the way ports operate, but change the requirement of individuals who not only work at the port, but also have to deal with port operations. Such is those requirements that exist today of employees that are mandated to receive training in maritime security, employees, employees that are mandated to receive training in Incident Command System and the National Incident Management System, such that also that employees, as well as some operators who deal with the port, have to go through the processes and obtain a Transportation Worker's Identification Card in order to continue to work. Those were mandates, and a lot of those mandates were mandates that didn't exist when 2924 was around, was first enacted. They're mandates that exist today. And as a result of those mandates, and federal mandates, mind you, these are requirements that these port employees, that the port employees, each and every port employee is required to possess, to have, to express, to acknowledge for their continued employment. These are mandates, these are trainings and certifications that can be received by, yes, other individuals in the community, but are not required of those positions, other positions, but are required of them. In other words, Madam Speaker, if these employees don't possess these certifications, these trainings, they can't work there. And they've taken the time to be able to meet these mandates, so that they can do their jobs. And like the previous speaker had expressed as well, as a result of these trainings, you know, one of the questions, and I tell you, Madam Speaker, right now, and just a little correction with, with, with the previous speaker, okay? Right now, with the port being at MARSEC Level Three, we can go there. Obviously, yes, because of security concerns and everything, maybe some of our movement is restricted inside of the fence. But when the MARSEC level is raised, there may be is times when we're not gonna be permitted there for security purposes, but these employees are still required to work there, but now under restrictive conditions and continue the operations of the port. And they know these. And when the port raises its MARSEC level, it doesn't affect another entity. And so, these specialized skills, these talents of employees like Jesse Agigie, you know, and Ken Quintaniza, and Evelyn Pangolinen Bagafu, these are skills, these are, this is knowledge, this is training, this is certification that is necessary for them. And if you read the intent of 2924, it recognizes that. Did it recognize MARSEC and TIC back then? We didn't have it back then. We have it today. It's the evolution of the workplace, the skills that these guys have. And so, you know, and then when we talk about, and I, and I, I understand and I agree too about where this money is going to be to pay for these pay classifications, reclassifications. But you know, absent all the discussion, it was already going to cost the port about $2.5 million, had there not been any of the amendments that we're discussing today. Now with the amendments, $26,000 to acknowledge the rest of the employees that also have roles that are unique and are certified to the operations of the port. And so, I just wanna allay those fears and concerns. I can say that without any conviction. I think that of all, anybody that's in this session hall, I can probably speak with the most authority on probably what Speaker M. Pincot was thinking about. This was a guy, if you remember quite well, Madam Speaker, 'cause we used to joke about it. I had the honor... I had the honor of sitting next to a man who, when I was a baby, carried me, without any fear of embarrassment, who changed my diapers, who I called Nino because he was the godfather of my sister. I had the honor of sitting right next to him in the last day he was in session. I had the honor of sitting next to him in his last, in his few days in the 29th Guam And I can stand here and say to him, because we all know he's here, Speaker Umpinco, this is what you wanted, this is, I know this is what you wanted done, we're doing it. We're doing it because of the family that you have at the port and taking care of them. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome, Senator Blas. Vice Speaker Cruz, you're recognized on the amendment.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. First, I have to apologize for having left the hall this morning. I did not have the opportunity to discuss this with the late Speaker Umpinco. But what I did this morning was I went back to my office to discuss the implication of this bill with Cecilia Martinez of Department of Administration. And while I have, while I support increasing the salaries of employees throughout government, I just want us to be able to walk into this thing with our eyes wide open. I want it realized that, and I recognize that there are employees at the Port Authority of Guam who don't exist anywhere else, the stevedores, the gantry crane operators, the harbor master, and maybe even the security people there. But in my discussion with Department of Administration is that, as a result of things that we have done in this legislature that are piecemeal, Port Authority, I mean, the GWA, GPA, GAA, and now the port will probably be able to have their own salary scale at the same time that we have instructed and directed Department of Administration to conduct a unified pay scale for the government of Guam. And I want all of us to understand that as a result of these three studies being done on, and completed in some of the other agencies, and will be completed before the GovGuam one is complete, that the results of those studies are going to impact the decision and the classifications that we will finally come down to in the government-wide GovGuam study. And we're going to have to recognize that positions like being in personnel services, as I was talking to Mrs. Martinez, of a personnel service specialist at the port or at the airport or at GWA who handles maybe 200 employees, as opposed to someone at the Department of Administration making, I mean, handling several thousand applications, that in fairness to the ones the Department of Administration, that when the hay makes its report, it's going to have to go up much higher than initially anticipated for some of those positions at the government, at the Department of Administration. Same thing with accountants and a couple of other positions, that even if they did just, you know, know that only it's for the hiring of gantry crane operators makes them unique, it's going to affect the overall bottom line. And I don't oppose the amendments, I don't oppose going through this, I just want us to understand and go into this thing with our eyes wide open, that be expecting that in the 2011 budget, that the cost of operation for government is going to go up substantially. In talking to the chairman, it's maybe an additional $30 million. If we're ready for that, and if that's our, if that's what we're doing, I mean, you know, I'm not going to try to speculate what someone who's no longer here said, I just want us that are here today to have it clear in our minds what it is we're planning on doing and understanding the ramifications of our actions. And if we're ready for them, it's not even an issue of trying to figure out whether or not the special, technical, I mean, the personnel specialists or the accountants or the procurement people at Department of Administration want to compare themselves to someone in the States. They just have, want to compare it to someone in Harmon, someone in Upper Tumon, someone in PD. And they're going to have to be compensated equally, if not more so, because their responsibilities are much greater. And if that's our decision, then at least let's make it clear at this point that that's what we're doing and that we're ready to, to address that ramification when we get a substantial increase in the government operation, which I welcome. But I'm just saying, let's realize that all of these different studies that are going out, that are being done separately and apart from the one that's being done that we had instructed DOA to do, is going to have produce four, five different studies, and the last one that comes out is going to be DOAs. And it's going to take into account the amounts that are given to the various autonomous agencies around, and we'll see substantial increases for positions that are not, I mean, that were not unique to GWA, to GPA, or to PAG. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Welcome, Vice Speaker Cruz. Senator Rector, you are recognized on the amendment.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. This is, it's kind of interesting, this is like a role reversal of certain ways, with the Republicans wanting to have everybody getting a pay raise, and the Democrats going, well, wait a minute, there might be problems with this. It's, sometimes I feel like I've just walked into the Twilight Zone today. So it's kind of, kind of interesting to me. But realistically, look, I mean, I'm the guy that always fights for pay raises, and I'm the guy that's always said, everybody across the board, not just certified technical professionals should get pay raises. Hey, I don't care if you're a custodian, you still have to feed your family, and you still pay $4 a gallon, just like every single other person on this island, or $3.50 or whatever gas is these days. I drive an electric truck, so I wouldn't know. Thank goodness. But by the same token, we have to go into this with our eyes open. By the same token, we have to, we can't just make stuff up and say, well, we're going to put it in the intent so it's going to change labor law across the country, it's going to change everything in the code. You know, when we talk about similar positions in the government of Guam, we talk about a computer operator one is a computer operator one is a computer operator one. Now, while folks at the port have some specialty training to be there, when we define what makes a position unique, we talked about these other assigned duties. Government of Guam code allows, as long as it's less than 50% of their actual duties, other assigned duties is applicable. So when we look at this, and we're saying that these folks have positions that are unique to, maritime positions unique to the port, and we say that because they've gone through the Maritime Transportation Security Act and the U.S. Coast Guard Training and Orientation on Port Security and Marine Security Act, does this occupy 50%, more than 50% of their workday? Somehow, I doubt it. And what really concerns me about this is, who else are we going to, as much as these folks need the raise, everybody across the government of Guam needs the raise. And I just feel bad for somebody that's a computer operator one at DOE. Isn't their job just as hard? Don't they keep our island running? All right, what about the computer operator here at the legislature? What about the autobody worker at DPW? It's just disingenuous to say that these guys at the port should get it because they've gone through some special security training, and not these other folks. They have to go through specialty training as well, right? When you're at a school, you have an evacuation plan. When you're dealing with students, you have specialty training that goes along with that as well, you know? But it's not more than 50% of their job responsibilities. So, this amendment kind of worries me, and it, and it does it for a number of reasons. It does it because we're just basically saying that if we took this into account, then there would be no unified pay scale within the government of Guam. This might have incredibly long-reaching ramifications. So does that mean that we can't transfer, a public employee can't transfer now from one agency to the next because everyone has something that's unique to them? Accounting in GPSS is going to be semi-unique to that agency as compared to accounting for the port, right? But accountants of the port now are going to get a raise, and the accountants of GPSS aren't. And that's what worries me. So now, we're going to basically throw away the unified pay scale if this amendment goes through. We're going to say that nobody can transfer between agencies of GovGuam anymore, we can't latterly move employees around because now everybody's going to have unique and talented positions. I understand the intent of this, and I agree with the intent of it. Once again, everybody deserves a raise. But we have to be very careful about these things. There are, what's that, the law of unintended consequences? And this is something that can really hit on that, and I don't think people have really explored all the ramifications that this seemingly simple amendment makes. So therefore, I, you know, and I doubt if there's anybody in this room that has done more research on labor law than me, but it might be true, somebody has. And that's one of the reasons this worries me a lot. So I'm afraid I have to stand opposed to this amendment. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you very much, Senator Rector. Are there any other speakers on the amendment? So, Senator Tenorio to close on your amendment.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, when I introduced this, it was at the conclusion of a long discussion at which myself, members of the port, Senator Ada, Senator Blas, our legal counsel, many capable people, had a long discussion this morning, prior to coming to session this morning. And it was at that time when, having the discussion, the basis of this amendment came. Legislative intent wasn't, and never was, in my opinion, put forward for the purpose of contradicting my mentor and our good friend, the late Speaker Tony Umpinco. It's actually, to the contrary, it's actually meant to ensure that we actually do what is in keeping with what my good friend Senator Blas had mentioned earlier about the family of the Port Authority, and making sure that those individuals who in fact have those skills, knowledge, and abilities, based on the contents of my amendment to the legislative intent, in fact do have, then be distinguishing them in their service, in their abilities, from other classes of similar functions. But again, the discerning issue here is that those qualifications and those requirements are in fact different. And then, when we place these certification requirements and training and the thresholds of standards on these individuals, that they should be compensated in accordance with that. And the study did an assessment, and these assessments were that, I think, I spoke to Senator Ada, Senator Ada said that we're looking at about a 14% increase, which would represent those individuals that are going to be covered. So, if you remember, Madam Speaker, there was an increase to teachers, I think, education, was about 17%? Something in that range, certified educators and certified personnel within the Guam public school system, I think, got about, was it 40? 13?
14.
About 14%? Okay. So this is about a 14% increase as well. So, it's not about red herrings like calling something that's white-blue, or saying they were going to legislate stopping time, or saying that other people are not going to be paid because these individuals are included. That's not the issue here. The issue is, are these individuals in fact unique in regards to their functions because of the qualifications and the training that they have and the skills they now possess, and because they're expected to maintain those skills and to be able to make sure that those skills contribute to the uniqueness of the operation of the port entitled to an increase in compensation? I want to ask you another question, Madam, not ask, but make the issue about some of the things that these individuals that we're talking about. First of all, they're qualified to do the job of the port, they have a heightened sense of responsibility. These individuals also, in keeping with the other requirements that we gave for similar autonomous agencies, are able to increase their compensation because we already know that they're being offered jobs every day, right now. Being offered jobs to work in other places so that they can actually get a higher increase, but they want to stay on Guam. And this is true across our government. We're going to be seeing a military increase which is going to force this government to finally increase the actual compensation for the rest of our government as well, because we already know that those salaries are long overdue to be adjusted upwards. Those private companies, construction companies, even the military themselves are offering people now jobs far and away more money than we are offering within our government. So an increase in the Port Authority as an autonomous agency authorized in this act would be just that, an autonomous agency increasing the compensation levels for those personnel who are unique to the operation of the port, as articulated in not just the resolution, or the amendment here, but also by the colleagues that I have a certain confidence in, Senator Ada, who's the author of this bill, and Senator Blas, who has infinite wisdom with regards to homeland security, and whose experience in this, and whose conversation this morning, along with that of the port employees, and those people in management understand that those personnel are critical to the operations of the port. Madam Speaker, I'll make my final point here, which is, we have to go into this with our eyes wide open. I don't think anybody in here is asleep. We know what's going on. We're increasing the compensation level for people at an autonomous agency as a result of a study that was done, which showed that the justification for that increase is intact, and that these individuals, based on, again, what we are saying in this amendment in paragraph three of the legislative intent, in fact do have and possess skills in areas which are unique from other agencies. They're autonomous agency. Is anybody else going to be deprived from compensation? No. Is the hay study or the increase for the rest of the government already in process or in progress and forthcoming to this legislative body? Of course it is. Does that mean that these individuals are not entitled and should not be compensated in accordance with their skill, knowledge, and ability? Absolutely not. We're not pitting one class of employee against another, Madam Speaker. We're talking about a class of employee who has a responsibility to the Port Authority of Guam, and who has a responsibility based on their skills, knowledge, and abilities, which are above, in many cases, their counterparts in other places. That doesn't mean their counterparts don't deserve compensation. As a matter of fact, that's something that I hope this body takes up, to increase the compensation for their employees that have not yet been covered. We had healthcare, we had education, we have public safety and law enforcement, we have had increases. I think the maximum amount was given to public safety and law enforcement, that was 40%. This represents 14%. So if we give an increase to those other agencies who have not yet been given an increase in compensation, that'd probably be on the same clip, about 14%. What would the cost of that government be? What would that cost represent to our government? I guess we'll have to do the math on that, but what is the cost of not increasing our employees' compensation at the port? What is the cost of not increasing 14% perhaps to all the other classes of employees who may be covered by this amendment? What will happen? They'll go to work for someone else. They'll leave Guam. They'll go to work for the private sector and the military. That's what's going to happen to those individuals, Madam Speaker. And we all know, I think we all know, we need to increase that compensation for all our people of Guam. And yeah, And yeah, there's a previous speaker who said it looked like a role reversal and this is the Twilight Zone. It's not the Twilight Zone, this is reality. This economy is going to sustain a military buildup. We are going to have construction companies here and security companies coming to Guam that are going to be offering their personnel far and away more money than we're offering right now. Are we going to continue to deny them because we have some study that's undergoing? No, this is an autonomous agency that has their own analysis that was done. Madam Speaker, we're talking about what is inevitable. We need to increase the compensation, not just for the Port Authority of Guam, but all the classes. Whether you're working the revenue tax, DPW, the Department of Administration, or any other agency of the government of Guam that hasn't had an increase, we have to face that fact and we have to face it soon. But we can't deny those other agencies who are autonomous and generate their own revenue from the ability to retain their personnel by denying them the opportunity to do this now. So I ask you and my colleagues, notwithstanding the objections of one of my previous speakers, to please look at this seriously. This is not just about those people who are professional, technical, those are about the people who need to be able to do the jobs every single day at our Port Authority and it's also about ensuing conversations from here on about making sure that we compensate the government of Guam employees beyond this particular bill to make sure that they're brought up on a par so we can retain our qualified, professional and dedicated employees of the government of Guam. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome, Senator Tenorio. I'm going to go ahead and recognize Senator Tina Munya Barnes.
Sisus Massey, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, just based on all the deliberations that were going on, I just want to do a point of information based on the interpretation that was actually received from Public Law 29-24. And that was the original bill to authorize the commercial port and the airport folks to promulgate their rules and regulations. And it more specifically says that this august body finds that in order for the port and the airport to prepare for the military buildup, the port and airport must retain workers, particularly those in maritime and aviation-related positions unique to the port and airport operations, and hire certified personnel who have the proper technical or professional skills and experience. And just based on that, just based on what was signed into law, just wanted to bring it up for a point of information.
So what you've cited then is the...
Actual findings and the intent.
The actual intent in Public Law 29-24.
Yes.
Thank you very much, Senator Munya Barnes. Since there is an objection, I'm going to call for the vote then. So all those in favor of the amendment, please raise your hand. I'd like to recognize Senator Palacios. I understand that you want to make a notwithstanding.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, notwithstanding the House rule with respect to the earlier action of this body in passing my last amendment, I would like to move that this body reconsider its action on that for a technical adjustment. And that is because, of course, my amendment actually was attached to...
Wait, one moment. There is no objection, is there, to, because you need to make a technical correction, so ordered. You may proceed, Senator Palacios.
The correction then would have to be that that amendment should actually be on the Blas amendment which passed, which is on page three, at the end of item number two, which says the port and then comma, and then insert the amendment that was passed, which is inclusive of the position of police officers and so forth.
So on page three, then line 14, right after the word "port"...
Comma and then insert that.
...to inclusive of positions.
That would be the proper placement.
Yes. So on that motion, are there any objections? No objections?
Thank you, Madam Speaker.
So on the motion then to place Bill 142, as substituted by the committee and further substituted on the floor, to the third reading file without any objec... Oh, I'm sorry, you're right, the main sponsor. I'm sorry, Senator Ada, you are recognized. Yeah. Oh, that's right, because we were on Tenorio's amendment, I'm terribly sorry. Do you mind waiting?
Oh, no, 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 no.
Okay. So now just, there are no other amendments, so now in the main bill then, unless you want to make an amendment on, as you speak on the main motion, are there any speakers?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. You know, I'd like to thank all my colleagues for caring so much about the employees of the port. I too care about the employees of the port and all the employees of the government of Guam. And it's because of that that I have to stand in opposition to this bill for a number of reasons. First, the compensation study. This is something that is going to be totally unique to the government of... Well, I guess either GWA and GPA get the set wage structures for their people, but it is going to create disparity in the government. But what worries me is that this study, I don't think was fair. I don't think this study did what the intent of the legislation was originally. In the original enacting legislation, 29-24, it states that it will be targeted at the U.S. national average levels compared to appropriate labor markets and account relevant economic factors. This study didn't even attempt to do that, at least not for the hard-working people that actually make that port run, the ones that are actually the people that are unique, the stevedores, the crane operators, the folks that unload these ships and ensure that our families get the goods they need. But what it did do is it gave big raises to management. For instance, the terminal superintendent went from $39,000 a year to $77,000 a year, a $38,000 difference. The marketing administrator went from $36,000 to $71,000, a $34,000 difference. Whereas if we go down to some of the other folks, like a welder, he went from $28,000 to $33,000, he only got a $5,000 bump. Plumbers, 24 to 29, only a $5,000 bump. Equipment operator two, from $18,000 to $23,000 a year. You know, in the port of Long Beach, an equipment operator two or the equivalent-type position makes $34 an hour. How can we say that this is a national average and equivalent? Crane mechanics that certify technical, there are no other cranes on Guam. These are people that can be, if we're so concerned about retaining our employees, retaining the people that are critical to the operation of the port. Crane mechanics are unique. They do something that nobody else does. And yet, we only gave a crane mechanic two from $31,000 to $37,000, only a $6,800 raise. This isn't going to help retain him. He can go to the port of Long Beach if he could get a job, which these jobs are very coveted, as one might imagine, and ports all around the world. But if he could get a job there, he would go in a heartbeat because he'd be making over $100,000 a year, not $30,000 a year. So that's one of the issues I have with this. That the people that commissioned the study, the folks in management that gave the marching orders to the people that were doing the study, came back and surprise, surprise, the people in management got all the big raises. And the people at the end of the stick, the people that do the hard labor, the dangerous labor of unloading those ships, unloading those containers, transporting them, bringing them to where they need to go, those guys didn't get squat. And I don't think that's fair. Now, that's not the only problem I have with this bill. One thing we've talked about a lot is salaries in this. But what we didn't talk about are the rules and regulations that have been modified as well. There is a problem with that. One is I'm not quite sure if the people that have purported to care so much, to care so much about the folks of the port, which I do as well, I don't know if you guys realized that in this new rules and regulations, there was a cutback from 60 days of time off for job injury compensation to 30 days. So that means the guys that are out there unloading containers, that are working with heavy equipment in the middle of the night, in the rain, in the snow, and, well, we don't have snow, but in the rain, in the dark, in the wind, if they get hurt on the job, whereas they used to get two months of pay, now they only get one month.
Point of inquiry.
Yes, ma'am.
Point of inquiry.
Point, state your point of inquiry.
Ma'am, with regards to what the speaker is bringing up, concerns that I have here is whether or not the speaker is still the president of the Guam Federation of Teachers. And whether or not GFT, if passage of this bill will affect GFT's negotiation of their contract with the Port Authority of Guam.
Senator Rector, you have a response?
Yes, I do, and I was getting to that point.
Okay.
If you will allow me.
Yes.
Madam Speaker, a point of information.
Please state your point of information.
The gentleman raises, I guess, raises doubt on the foundations of the rules and regulations. For example, pointing out that the provisions on the workman's compensation has been reduced from 60 days down to 30 days. Whereas in fact, if one checks the statutes, he will find that those provisions are all based on local statutes. And so there's nothing in here that is subjective, that was thought about in the middle of the night, that somebody thought that 60 days was too many days and therefore we should reduce it to 30. And I'll be happy to try and get the citation for that.
Thank you very much for that point and as well taken.
It is well taken.
Senator Rector, then you will continue and you will address then the inquiry by...
Thank you. Yes, I will. And it's for this reason that, and for what the previous speaker brought up, that I will recuse myself from voting in this because of what might be considered a conflict of interest. And I could deal with that in a lot of ways, but I am still speaking as a member of the legislature right now.
One moment, gentlemen, state your point of information.
Point of inquiry, ma'am, and...
Which is it? Point of information or point of inquiry?
Point of inquiry. The good gentleman, and maybe it's a point of information, clarification before the good gentleman continues here. He's already stated that because of this perceived conflict of interest, he's not, he's going to recuse himself. I need, we're probably going to need legal counsel then to give us an advice as to whether or not the gentleman can continue his dissertation.
Senator Blas, if, normally, I mean, I've allowed this to happen, but normally you would have to state a point of order or a point of information.
I correct myself then.
And then you would give the information.
Point of order then, ma'am, I correct myself.
Okay. So what's the point of order?
Point of order is basic, well, ma'am, should he be allowed to continue his dissertation with regards to...
Madam Speaker, if you take a look at our rules, when a member of the body rises to the point of order, he has to cite the rule that he's rising to the point of order on.
Yes, you are correct in that.
Then I request for a couple minutes so that I can cite the point of the rule.
Here, we'll take a minute recess. Here, we'll take a minute recess. Senator Blas, I'm going to give Senator Rector then the opportunity then to respond.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. And it was a good point of inquiry. I, uh...
Yes, and we discussed it, and we found out there wasn't a specific citation.
Public law 30-30, of which, ma'am, you were the author actually of the legislation, which is now law.
So, but you've got to, when you say point of order, please cite then...
I'm going to cite the section of the law, ma'am. Subsection G...
No, but it has to be, you have to cite from the rules, our standing rules.
All right.
Not the law, so that's why I'm saying then, requesting that Senator Rector then respond to the original point of inquiry that he started to talk about. So please allow him to do just that.
Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Senator Rector, you are recognized.
After reviewing the rules and reviewing the law, I tend to agree with the thing and not want there to be any balance or any question of whether this is a conflict interest. I will not speak on this bill any further, and I ask the House to accuse me from voting. Thank you.
You're welcome. So are there any other speakers then on the main motion before I call upon the primary sponsor? Senator Panglin, and you're recognized.
So just my see, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I stand to kind of give my perspective on this bill and the direction I'm going with regards to how I will vote on this bill. I will, for the record, state that when similar proposals came before this body to allow the other autonomous agencies, I voted against those proposals. And I vote for, I voted against those proposals for the very same concerns that give rise to acting on this proposal again. I saw exactly what happened in some of the previous authorizations that we've given when we allowed these departments and agencies to raise the salaries of critical and unique positions to the agencies. As a matter of fact, maybe I should commend the port, because at least the port came over here very honestly and said, "Everybody," or maybe I should state that. The port didn't do that. The port said, "Everybody except 17 or 15 positions." It's this body that's decided that it's everybody. So the port deserves credit for at least being honest. In a couple of other departments and agencies, when they said, "Don't worry, give us the authority, because it's only going to affect eight, 10 positions maybe," and instead it was just completely flipped around. Instead of eight positions that were crucial, that we needed to raise the salaries because they were being recruited by other companies and other organizations on Guam, and that they could not afford to lose these positions, that when the study was done and they implemented their policy, it was only eight positions that weren't covered. So the end result is the same as the port study where, when we started out discussing these unique positions, unique to maritime operations, it was somewhere in the neighborhood of, you know, we knew what they were. We knew what they were based upon what we know to be the job duties of the different positions at the port. And from our conversations with the many and different employees at the port, they know which positions are unique to port operations. And if you talk to them, they'll tell you that it's not everybody that's contained in the study. They'll tell you that in the discussion on this, it wasn't meant to be like this. This is what everybody wants, but it wasn't meant to be like this because we, in talking to them, those people self-identified those positions that are unique to port operations. And we have completely turned it on its head. Where we thought we had few positions, and that these are critical because these are being recruited, and that we're going to lose these people, we're now saying, "Everybody is being recruited, and we're going to lose everybody if we don't raise the salaries." That's a very different question than, "Does everybody deserve a raise?" I say, yes, everybody deserves a raise. But is everybody fit within this description of unique maritime positions and critical to the operations of the port, that if those individuals left, then the port will suffer? You know, one example that was given, a marketing administrator at the port. And I'll tell you, if the person in that position is, I think, who she is, I say, "She's worth $70,000." Her skill levels are such that, yeah, she's probably worth $70,000, but not at that position. Because that position for a port with no competition whatsoever, where you don't have to market anything to get your customers to come and pull their ships into the port, you don't need to pay somebody $70,000 a year to market the services of the Port Authority of Guam. There is just no competition for that, for the services of the port. But the person in there that I know, her skill sets are such that, yes, she could probably get $70,000 elsewhere. But it doesn't mean that that position, and the description, and the function, and its critical nature to the operation of the port, is such that that position is worth 70. I mean, what are we going to do? Tell Payless, "Hey, please make sure you ship through the Port Authority of Guam, because we need, we have to market our services?" No, what are they going to do? Go to Saipem? They still got to come and bring it here and put it in the Payless store on Guam. So there is no option. There is no need to say that we have to pay $70,000 or $75,000 for that position. That's the unfairness, I think, in looking at this. And it's the same unfairness, I hate to say it. It's the same unfairness that we saw in the study that was done at the GPA, at the Port Authority of Guam, I mean, at the Guam Power Authority. You take a look, and by the way, they're done by the same people, the same experts. But you take a look at the positions that received the biggest raises at GPA, and you take a look at the positions that received the biggest raises at the Port Authority, and it's not the people that are inside the power plant, or it's not the people that are on the waterfront. It's the people that are inside the office. That's unfair. It is unfair. It is these people that we need. The Navy's not recruiting a personnel specialist from the port. The Navy's recruiting a harbor master or a crane operator. That's who the Navy's recruiting. When we're saying we're competing with the Navy and the federal government, they're not going down to the... not going down to the... And the people at the Human Resources, they deserve a raise. But don't tell us that we need to raise everybody because we're going to lose. It is those individuals, like I said, that the Navy needs, or any other position. It is those positions that we want to protect. And in this case, it is those people, not just the position, the people in those positions that we want to keep and protect. And this doesn't do it. If that is the idea behind it, this doesn't do it and it falls short of doing that. Why is the general manager in this study? And he's a good friend of mine. Why is he included? There's no qualifications for a general manager. You just got to get yourself appointed by the governor. Sure, the governor's going to make sure you're qualified, but the position itself is not covered in terms of the requirements according to the study here. So in that respect, it doesn't fit. But it doesn't mean that the current general manager, he's a good friend of mine, he's my classmate, and he's qualified. And he's, from all references I can say, he's doing the job he needs to do and he's moving the port forward. But let's not, let's separate, when it comes to these kind of things, the people from the positions except, except for those positions where we say the people in those positions are critical and that we don't have them here on Guam and that if we wanted to bring up somebody, we got to find from somebody else, from someplace else, and that we've got to pay top dollar for those positions. So why do that? Why not begin to pay top dollar for the people in those positions now? And this doesn't do it. This plan depends on a raise to the tariffs. There's no way of funding this without increasing the cost to the people of Guam. It's not that they... And it's the same, said, "Okay, so we will, we'll let them increase the tariffs. And when it comes time to talk about the other GovGuam positions, then we better find a way." But is anybody going to say, "Well, then we'll just increase the taxes to increase the salaries"? Then we have a huge problem because nobody wants to increase the taxes to pay now for the GovGuam line employees that are coming up for their pay raise because it goes against our basic constitution as a good businessperson, good Republican, because Republicans just don't want to raise taxes and think you should just cut back government operations to fund anything else. So, we'll go ahead and increase the tariffs because we didn't do it in here. They did it. PUC did it. But when it comes then to funding the increase that we need to find to pay for the line employees and how else do you fund the general operations of the government of Guam except with taxes, we're going to say, "Nope, because that's, we shouldn't be raising taxes." So what do we do with those people? So in my examination of this, the way that the pay scales are structured and the pay increases are structured, and the way I look at it is it's unfair. The people that this policy was meant to help are being helped at much less with regards to the increase that they will receive for their positions than the people that it wasn't meant to address. Those people are getting, as we know, as we see, 25, 30, 50, 60% pay increases while the guys out on the waterfront and up in the high towers of the crane are getting 10, 15%. And you can't take that guy out of that air-conditioned office and put him in a crane who's now getting, going to get a 60% increase and have him operate that crane. He just can't. I don't care what certification he has, he can't, he doesn't have that skill set. So where are we going to get the next crane operator? We're going to get him from someplace else and he's going to come in and we're all going to say, "Above-step recruitment." And so the guy who we wanted to keep, who left because we couldn't raise his salary to the level that we need to based upon his skills and what he's being offered elsewhere, he's going to leave. We're going to bring in somebody else, brand new, to port operations with the proper certification. And then we're going to say, "You know what? In order for him to come work for us, we're going to have to pay him 50% more than the last guy." And we're going to do it because we've got no choice. So why don't we raise that salary of the guy in there now 50%? Because we know that if he leaves, we're not going to get anybody else to come in with the proper skills to climb up that ladder, operate that crane at the salary that the guy just left at. Or at the salary that's being set in this pay scale. We're not going to be able to do it. You tell me, anybody out there can tell me that we're going to be able to find somebody with 10, 15 years' experience who knows the Port Authority of Guam, who knows the waterfront, that we're going to be able to get him and pay him at what the salary is in here? No. I'm telling you, the other guy's going to want what the other guy got at the other place. So why are we now going to punish, just say, "Okay, then you can leave and don't worry because the next guy, we're going to pay him more than you." Well, why don't we keep him here? Give him the 50% increase in pay. Give that crane operator that pay increase. But it doesn't do that. That, to me, is what is missing in the way that this is structured. That's the way I see it. That's the way I saw the others. And back then, it wasn't even that clear because they hadn't done it yet. We just gave them the authority to do it. But when it happened, it's certainly happening exactly. And now, we are looking at increasing the salaries of some of those other people. You know, when GPA did their pay raise and they said, "We got to do it because we're competing for these positions and these critical people because they're all leaving because the pay's too low. And so we've got to increase the pay." So I asked GPA, "Can you please go back in all your personal records and do a survey? How many of people that resigned from GPA within the last three years have resigned because they said the pay is too low?" So we needed to raise all this and when, you know what? When they came back with the answer? One. Of the 60 people that left over the last three years, they said only one said he was leaving because the pay was too low. So I said, "Well, that doesn't fit for what you tell us. Can you give me for the last five years? How many people that left in the last five years in this critical certified technical positions left because they said the pay was too low?" If you only had one in this, maybe it's an abomination. So how many in the last five came back and they said? So, are we really dealing with the right set of facts here? Or are people leaving because they see the port and its management put in a policy that says that the guys that are doing the work are going to get a 14% pay increase and the guys at the other end are getting 50 and 40 and say, "We don't want to be treated that way. We are more valuable than that. We deserve something more." But this is what they get. My good colleague reminded us that this is going to affect the entire government of Guam. And my position has always been, we know that there are unique set of skills for certain positions in the government of Guam. And is this the proper way? When we met with the Hay consultants, we discussed with them this problem. We discussed the problems of these positions that are outside the realm of the normal functions of running a government, like a high-voltage electrician or a crane operator. You're not going to find a high-voltage electrician at the Department of Administration. You may find a general maintenance electrician, but a high-voltage electrician, there's only one entity that employs or requires that skill. When you're dealing with 13 KVA lines and above, and that's going to be a GPA. And that guy or that position deserves a premium. And so, in this case, the consultant's request or recommendation was, "You've got to take a look at the total picture. You are one government unless you don't think so. We say we are a port family." No, we're a government of Guam family, you know, and maybe the port is, maybe the entire GovGuam is, you know, cruise. But, you know, you have jetty cruise and you have the other kind of cruise, but we're all cruise. Now we're saying, "We're not even that anymore. We are a cruise and a bautista and a, you know, and whatever else." And I think that we have to take a look at the big picture, not the big picture, but the big picture, everybody within the government and try to treat everyone fairly. And I don't think this does. I don't think the past actions that we have done does. And so because we have, are we going to continue down that path? Or are we going to try and remedy equity and fairness for everyone and recognize those positions within the government of Guam that require special people and special skills? Everybody is required to undergo a police clearance to go to work. Everybody's required to be CPA certified at the Guam Fire Department. But not everyone gets CPR pay. It is those people whose jobs require them to perform that function. And it is that kind of differences, I think, that are critical in terms of structuring a way of treating everybody fairly. Everybody's, every personnel specialist or every procurement person must know the procurement laws of Guam. And so whether you're procuring something at DOE or GPSS or you're procuring something at the port or a GPA, you must know the procurement laws of Guam. And there should be some equity for that. And this continues the inequity in those kinds of situations, and I don't think that's But I go back to my original premise of why I really have a hard time supporting this. It is because the inequity is not only going to occur within the entire government of Guam, but the inequity in the way that this pay structure is implemented is going to occur within the port itself. And it treats those people that we wanted to ensure, that we wanted to protect unfairly. I believe that. To me, it's not a question of, "Should everybody get a raise?" Yes, everybody should get a raise. My good colleague thinks everybody in the private sector should get a raise and he's going to make, try and do it. But the question is, when we do it, are we going to do it fairly and as a part of one government, one organization, with very different parts and very different functions within this one organization? And I think if we don't do that, then we are not doing our job. So, Madam Speaker, I look at that from that perspective and I look at this from this perspective. And I worry about the effect, the compounding effect of continually doing this. And that rather than trying to develop something that would allow us to kind of bring everybody along, we are instead continually pushing everybody ahead. And I don't know that I can go along with doing that. I honestly don't know. But I do know that it doesn't, my action on this bill is not reflective of whether or not I think those employees at the port or at the airport or at GPA deserve a pay raise for the work that they do. I just want to know that when I do that, what am I doing with regards to the other employees of the government of Guam and how am I affecting them? And then when I kind of do all that, then I have to take a look at, what is the result of this action as it relates to this on the people of Guam? How are we going to help the people of Guam? How are we going to, how is our actions going to impact their pocketbooks? How is it going to impact their families? Those that don't work for the government, that have to bear the burden of paying for the cost of running this government? I have to think about those people too. That's why I said, "Let's..." If we don't have a plan for tax refunds and how we're going to pay them, let's get it and give it back to the people. Give it back to the government employee. Give it back to the private sector employee who's waiting for his refunds for three years, five years. But I didn't say, "Let's just pay the tax refund for the government employee," because I had to consider everyone. So when I consider the actions we're doing here, I have to consider what effect it's going to have on the 50,000 other, or 35,000 other working individuals on Guam whose cost of living is going to be impacted by the decision we make here. I have to think about those people and the cost that they're going to have to ensure because we already know, we already know that based upon the presentation by the committee and the chairman and the committee report that's in here is saying that they will not be able to even give any pay raise at all at the port to anybody at all until we raise tariffs, until we raise the cost to the people that are recipients of the service and the goods that are moved through that port. And should we do it in this magnitude because we wanted to protect these critical employees? No, the whole philosophy now is we should just do it because we want to ensure that everybody... And that's when I say, "There was some strategic thinking that was going in terms of targeting these positions." And now, it's just a shotgun effect. Just shoot it out and cover everybody. No more strategic surgical decisions that can increase efficiencies and revenues at the port with... without burdening the people of Guam with the additional costs. And that when we made those decisions and we increased the revenues, we can increase pay for everyone without increasing the Port Authority. It's like what we're saying, you know, we're all waiting for this military buildup. And we're saying, we'll wait, we're only going to give raises to certain people. We only gave raises to law enforcement because we couldn't afford to give it to everybody else without raising taxes. And the idea was, well, we'll just wait for the military buildup and when we have all this revenue, we'll just give a raise to everyone. Well, yes, that makes sense. But that was our thinking here, that we needed to be targeted on that. And I think the port, for me and my thinking and in my past discussions with colleagues in this body, that when we do this and we keep these people in anticipation of the buildup and they'll be here in the buildup and we'll have the benefit of their skills and their efficiencies and their knowledge. And throughput in the port increases in a year or two years, then we can give everybody a raise. But we need to keep these people now. Because of this policy, we're going to lose those people before any kind of increased activity occurs at the port because we're not being strategic. And we're going to end up then just increasing that cost. And we're not going to keep the people that we want to keep and reward those positions for those real unique positions. And so Madam Speaker, I thank you for indulging me and trying to articulate the thinking that goes behind my analysis of what we're doing here. Some of the history that what has occurred when we've implemented the same policy and moved forward in this direction and some of the things that were said were going to happen, that didn't happen. And those that were said was going to happen, that was not going to happen, that did happen. And I've got to take all of that into consideration before making my decision. But again, fundamentally, there are some real shortcomings in the way that this is presented with regards to the impact on those positions for those employees at the port. In addition to the impact, of course, on the entire family at the port. So I thank you and Sidus Masik.
You're very welcome, Senator Fanglin. On the main motion before I call on the primary sponsor to speak on the bill as amended. Okay, then Senator Ada, you are recognized.
Madam Speaker, thank you very much. I first of all want to thank my colleagues for rising and speaking on the bill for or against. I think the points that have been made have all been very cogent and certainly worth the time that was taken to speak on the points. I recognize the fact that there is this issue about, is it fair? This issue about that it's not comprehensive enough, that it just takes care of certain people in an organization. It only takes care of one organization out of the entire government. And I guess it comes down to then, you know, in real simple language, what to do, what to do? You know, there's, if I do this, this is going to happen. If we don't do that, that's going to happen. And I guess at some point, we're going to have to just take action and do something and develop the situation from there. And I believe that Bill 142 is basically saying that. And the genesis of 142, of course, was Public Law 29-24. And so, Madam Speaker, I'm suggesting that, of course, Bill 142 says, let's start addressing an organization which we have, everybody says is the lifeblood of this community. Eighty percent, eighty to ninety percent of everything that we consume comes through that port. And we need to get it up to the level where it needs to be to provide the level of service that is needed for this island. It is true that the pay adjustment will have an economic impact. But I do not agree that the the impact will come as a result totally from a, an increase in the tariffs. I have to give good faith in the management and the board of the Port Authority that they will take a look at how they operate to ensure that efficiencies are put in, to ensure that the operating costs are in fact minimized so that the amount of increases in the tariffs will not be as high as otherwise. But there's going to have to be a combination of both. To suggest that they're going to find $2.5 million worth of operating costs to reduce is probably unrealistic. But they're going to probably need to take a look at reductions that will have to be made in order to minimize the tariff increases. There is also the suggestion that was made that maybe we should target those positions that are really critical, such as the gantry crane operators. And I, I guess I would have to disagree with that because I see the port as an organization that has to work as a team. And to suggest that one particular employee is more deserving than any other employee, I believe goes against the fundamentals of good management principles. And I would subscribe to the idea that the organization is only as strong as the weakest link in it. And as a result, we have to bring everybody along. Now, it was also suggested that maybe as a result of the fact that having made this pay adjustment applicable to everybody, then it's going to go to nobody because now it's going to be made economically infeasible to be able to provide the pay adjustments to everyone. And the fact of the matter is that the R analysis shows that by opening it up to everyone, all the employees of the Port Authority, we're talking about an incremental difference of about $26,000. So certainly, I don't see the difference as being so significant. I suppose that we can take a, we can take a very conservative, make a very conservative interpretation of Public Law 29-24. And if that's the case, we can, you know, the list of eligibles would probably fill one quarter corner of the sheet on Appendix A. If we open it up to everyone, we basically have added 17 additional positions to that. So we've gone from a, you know, possible, very conservative to a very liberal. And I suggest that Bill 142, I certainly support it to take the liberal interpretation so that the entire organization is taken forward. So Madam Speaker, I certainly would ask my colleagues to support the bill. And let's begin with this one organization that certainly serves the lifeblood of our community. Before I close, I would like to just make one motion, two motions, Mr. Chairman. One is I would like to add as co-sponsors to Bill 142, Senator Frank Blas, Senator Adolfo Palacios, and Senator Ray Tenorio.
On that motion, hearing no objections, so ordered.
Finally, Mr. Speaker, I would just like to, I guess, make the motion that that any, where we talk about adopting the rules and regulations, it would be the rules and regulations as attached to Bill 142.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Counsel will take that into account.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Speaker. And I think the motion's been made to move 142 down the voting file.
Is there any objection to moving 142 to voting file? So ordered, no objection, so ordered. Madam Speaker, I understand that the next bill is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I'd like to make a motion to place Bill 154 on third reading, and I'd like to speak on it.
Please.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, Bill 154 would require a service learning requirement for high school graduation. This requirement will be implemented beginning the, entering ninth grade in the school year 2011. And each school then, or each child, rather, student will be required to complete 75 hours of service learning, which actually, if you can calculate, it's about 19 Saturdays if you're going to do four hours a day. Now during the public hearing, the Department of Labor Director Maria Connolly provided favorable testimony in support of the bill and discussed the successes of the other type of service learning programs such as Passport to Careers, Serve Guam, and AmeriCorps, which are service learning programs. The superintendent, Superintendent Schaefer, also gave testimony in support of the bill. She explained that some, but not all students in GPSS are performing significant hours of service learning in the high schools because these such programs that require it are like the National Junior Honor Society, Student Government, National Honor Society, and other student governments. And what has happened is that all of the other children are not given the opportunity to provide this if they were not a part of NJHS or NHS or Student Government. Ms. Rosalyn Meeks, the principal of JP Torres Alternative School, also testified in favor of the bill citing that she has seen a lot of difference in her student population with regards to career exploration through programs utilizing service learning. And the principal, JFK principal, Mr. Ken Charcliff, also said that the same thing, corroborated the same thing, that there are students already performing it, service learning, and that he feels that the 75 hours that is required in this bill is just the floor and not the ceiling. So, you know, people then would ask, basically, what then is service learning? And actually, this is already a part of the mandate. It's actually a law and what I've done here is I'm actually implementing, I mean, amending it because originally it was supposed to be a, just an elective. And this has been passed several years back, Mr. Speaker, and only, and nothing essentially has been done about it. So the mission of service learning is to allow each student and to gain knowledge of the community's needs, to expand learning beyond the four walls of the classroom, to provide opportunities for lifelong intellectual and personal growth, and to feel the intrinsic rewards associated with giving back to society. So what are some of the benefits? I'm sure maybe some of you are asking yourselves of service learning. And for the students, there's a lot of benefits. One is, and this is the most exciting part of it, is that it really enriches student learning by bringing books to life and life to books. It engages our students in active learning. And that's the one thing I've always heard from students, you know, as a former educator, is that how do we make what we teach in the classroom really relevant to and important? You know, bringing the importance of the academic work to real life experiences and how that can help them in their career choices? It also increases awareness of current societal issues as they relate to academic areas of interest for our students. It broadens the students' perspective of, you know, diverse type of issues and it definitely enhances critical thinking skills and analytical skills. And, you know, we talk about that all the time, especially in reading in our literature classes and even in math and science. And this definitely is one of the, I feel, a big benefit to our students. Another that sometimes maybe, it may not be as easy to measure is the improving of interpersonal skills of our children, especially in cultural awareness and tolerance and other professional or personal spheres. And, and this I heard in a conference that I attended that was sponsored by the Department of Justice where in this room were a bunch of judges, attorneys, attorney generals that were in this meeting. And one of the things that I heard, that judges have said that they have noticed a really big difference with children in particular that are being referred to the court, is that they've seen that we no longer, and learn rather, that our schools no longer offer a course of civics to our, at that time, our junior high school students and high school students. So what this program would actually do, service learning would do, is to develop civic responsibility through active community involvement by increasing, let's say, leadership skills, increasing a sense of citizenship and, you know, and a commitment and social responsibility. So those are the benefits to the students. But now the next question is, is how is this going to benefit the community? It will provide substantial human resources to meet educational, human safety, and environmental needs of local communities. And later I'll give you some examples of some of the projects that our students can be involved in. This also, students, we all know, our children have a lot of energy, a lot of enthusiasm. And how do we take that and try to focus them and move them in that direction? And definitely can be channeled to meeting some of the needs of our community. It also fosters an ethic of service and civic participation in our students who will be, and this is not a cliche, tomorrow's volunteers and civic leaders. And it will create potential for additional partnership and collaboration with their schools. Because once you've established this, they see how you are. They see your school, where are they in light of what you're doing? They would more than likely end up being a partner to your school. So I'd like just to share a few statistics, Mr. Speaker. And like, for example, in a school system in Louisiana where they've provided 1.9 million service learning hours. Now we calculate that, let's say, just using minimum wage, that would have equated to a little over $12.4 million of human resources to the community. And then you take Indiana, who's another one. The economic benefit of our children volunteering comes out to $3.4 million annually. So across the United States, there's a total of 12.5 million students engaging in service and service learning. And research has shown a tremendous growth. We always talk about 100% growth and things to that nature, thinking that that might be the max. But it's actually 3,663% in the number of students engaged in high school service learning between 1984 to 1997. So research has shown that student participating in service learning has positive impacts on their leadership ability, their grades, retention, degree aspirations, critical thinking skills, and a commitment to helping others in difficulty. So service learning by our students will improve the quality of life of our community by providing cultural, economic, and educational opportunities that would not likely be available otherwise. So, and in conclusion, I like to say, service learning is not a fad, as some people may think. It is a movement that has participation rates as large as any major youth initiative in the country. It offers significant benefits to society, that I said. It offers benefits to our children and it benefits, of course, any participating institutions. We always worry about our children after school. We worry about them during the spring break. We worry about them in the summertime. We worry about them on the weekends and what are they doing? And parents are always, you know, racking their brains trying to find opportunities for them. Well, just think that when, you know, we're able to have this in our high schools with our high school children, then we won't need to worry about them spending their times, their idle times on the streets and being influenced by negative activities and getting into trouble. Because this service learning requirement will give our children the outlet to spend their breaks and after schools, doing meaningful work and enjoyable activities and off the streets. So service learning also serves as a path to a career. It'll provide students firsthand insight to any job and career. It would teach them work ethics such as promptness, attendance, hard work, determination, diligence. Young people are more likely to stay engaged in and the community when they feel they're participating, or participation is meaningful and that they can make their time worthwhile and useful in contributing. So some of the examples that I'd like to share with you that are in existence, and there are hundreds of them actually, but I like to take the ones in particular that we know of that some of our that we know of, that some of our own children in the National Honor Society or Student Government are involved in, such as, let's say, planting trees for the environment, honoring our Veterans Days for, for maybe a breakfast day or an assembly, working at Guam Animals in Need again, holding a candidate's forum, disability awareness, environmental cleanup days, daybreak adult daycare center, interactive visitation, food for the homeless, mentoring a youth center, nature trails, serving seniors, adopting a wet, a wetland, weekly teen talk show. A lot of these our children are already doing or participating in, but they're not getting any kind of credit or hours that can be used towards their graduation. Seventy-five hours, like, like Senate, like the principal said from JFK, is that it is only the floor, it is not the ceiling. So some of these programs are currently being done. The format, the procedures, they're all there, and these, the Department of Labor and some of these programs, as a matter of fact, that are part of the, of the school system, are in place, and all they would need to do, and based on the existing legislation, is that all it would take then now is for, for them to set up the parameters in, in terms of what programs would be allowed, what would not be allowed, because, because we don't want this where our children would be working for a for-profit type of, you know, companies are being paid for this because this is not the intent of what service learning is all about. The only amendment, Mr. Speaker, that I would like to make, if I may please, is that I would like to add Senator Matt Rector as the third cosponsor.
No objections.
There being no objections, so ordered.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Senator Munia Barnes, I understand you wish to speak on the bill.
I suppose it would be brief. Sisusmasi, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I stand and rise in full support of this bill, and I'd like to thank the author for giving me the opportunity to be a part of her, the cosponsorship for this bill. Earlier she talked about this not being a fad. I truly believe that it is not a fad also, but it is a positive movement forward for our kids to learn and grow and be a part of our community. You know, we talk, she talked and explained what learning, service learning is and, and what experiences may be expected, and for me, I truly believe that what may be expected from this is to influence the civic identity formation and related values and attitudes through the opportunities that it would provide for our students to tackle what happens within our, our community problems. It will express social responsibility and through benefits generated for this community, it would increase the social capital in ways that in which projects, service projects will promote the development of social networking and provide experiences of being mentored by an onsite supervisor or any other community member by sharing their perspectives of responsibilities and objectives and bringing a togetherness that would increase the, the, what you would call collaboration of bonding. You know, Mr. Speaker, this service learning effort, like the good author spoke about, is happening today, and she also spoke about the, the requirement that, that we were asking for is, is, is only the floor and not the ceiling. I just want to note for the record that we do have a lot of service landing programs going on right now, like with our National Honor Society and other club activity sponsorships, but you know what? When you give the opportunity for the kids to take part and learn and work with their community, you just get for a positive and a more matured student going in after graduation, going into society and better understanding what life truly is all about. So again, as I said, it was going to be super brief, I stand in full support. I ask that my colleagues help me support the same as when we had the public hearing and those who came in to speak about the bill. Everybody presented oral support, testimony in support, and said that this was definitely a, a, a good idea to be able to implement this into the, into our curriculum, into our school system. So thank you, Mr. Speaker, for giving me the opportunity to speak very briefly on this bill, Sisusmasi.
Thank you, Secretary Munia Barnes. I understand, I saw the hand of Senator Blas.
Hey, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I stand and rise in support of Bill 154, and I want to thank and applaud the Speaker and my sister for authoring and co-sponsoring this piece of legislation of which I feel is really necessary. And if I may say so, and I jokingly had this conversation with the Speaker and of course, and with my sister, that maybe we shouldn't just stop with just the student. Maybe we should also have this requirement for parents who have that responsibility, who continue to have that and should continue to have that responsibility in ensuring that their children get the proper education, get the meaningful education that is being provided. But you know, that said, Mr. Speaker, if you look, and, and people may look at this and says, wow, seventy-five hours of service? That will go in an instant. Seventy-five hours can be completed by an individual in a, in a short period of time. But the experience, the education, the knowledge, the camaraderie that, that individual is going to gain as a result of it is going to be invaluable. You know, Mr. Speaker, if you've ever walked and gone to the mall, you know, one night I, I did this just out of a test. I walked to the mall, walked into the mall, and I remember I purposely walked in front of a group of high school-aged kids, and I opened the door. And I remember in our, you know, when we were growing up, we were always told, it was a matter of fact, it was a mandate, if you will, that if an adult opens the door for you, you make sure you get that door from the adult, let the adult go through and, and thank. But you know, when I opened that door, children just walked through, not even a thank you. And, you know, I looked and I said, wow, what happened to the values? What happened to this respect? What happened to the sense of civic pride? And that's what this will do, will help to, to instill in our students. Because education is more than just what you learn in books. It's how you practice life. It's what you're taught in life. And how to be able to stand by your decisions, make the decisions, work as a team, feel good of your accomplishments, recognize your failures, learn from them. These are things, these are practical experiences and practical things that can only, that, that can be gained by this new requirement. You know, and with that, and with the indulgence and, of the Speaker, of the author and the, and the co-author, co-sponsor, I earnestly request to be named as a third sponsor to this legislation, fourth, fourth, I'm sorry, Matt, fourth.
No objections.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Thank you very much. So I, I'll end this, Mr. Speaker, because as was so eloquently stated earlier in, in another discussion, little talk, little problem. Little mistake, okay? I don't want to make any more mistakes. All right? So thank you very much, and I am in support of this legislation. Thank you.
Thanks, Senator Blas. And Senator Rector, you're recognized.
Sorry, Matt. I'm fourth.
It's okay. Thank you, Mr. Speaker. As the proud third cosponsor of this, of this bill, I'd like to rise in support of it. You know, sometimes the media portrays our educational system as a job training center. And yet, it's so much more than that. Our educational system isn't just to prepare students to get a job, it's to prepare students to be productive citizens in our democracy. And one of the things that helps students become productive citizens in our democracy is getting a chance to get out and be a part of our democracy, to learn something new, to participate in our democracy, and to participate in many, many different ways. And that's why this bill is so darn good to me, right? You know, you can teach things in the classroom, you can show movies, we can go on the internet, but you know, it's not the same as being there. It's not the same as doing it. Seeing a picture of a dirty beach isn't the same as actually going out and picking up those used diapers that have washed up on the shore. Seeing a picture or reading about somebody in a senior citizen home isn't the same as going and sitting down and talking to them, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. I can go on forever as to how this is a good bill, but it's been a long day and we're getting close to five o'clock, and we got one more we want to finish before the end of, before five. So let me just say that I ask all of my colleagues to support this bill. I believe it's good for, for the children in our school system, and it's good for all the people at Guam. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Senator Rector. Any other senators which would be recognized to speak on the main bill 154? Not seeing any hands go up with the main sponsor wish to, all right, is there any objection to sending the bill down to the voting pile? There being no objections, so ordered. The next bill on the agenda is Bill 156. The main sponsor is Madam Speaker.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I'd like to, to make a motion to, to place Bill 156 on third reading. I'd like to just briefly discuss it.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, Bill 156 would actually allow for the hiring of substitute teachers and for subsequent training of those teachers. What had happened, Mr. Speaker, in public law, public, let me see what's the number of that public law, 29113, when we were, the legislature had allowed in Section 37 limited-term appointment moratorium, one of the things is that there are certain positions within the government of Guam that we are exempted, and inadvertently, the limited-term part-time substitute teachers for the Guam Public School System was not, you know, included. So that is the very first thing that is amending public law 29113. The second is, is actually for the training for substitute teachers. Mr. Speaker, when we were doing the, the budget for, for GPSS and we had called all the principals in, one of the questions we always asked was the attendance rate for students, for faculty, staff, administrators, and in cases where we had the indication of high teacher absentee rates, and, but more importantly, to find out how long a teacher's been out, and these are, are from teachers who are serving in the military and have been gone anywhere between three months to five years. And many cases, we found some class, classes where our children were actually not with a certified teacher but with a substitute teacher. And I might like to, to add, let everybody know that the qualification for a substitute teacher is only a high school diploma. And, you know, and I met a former student, because I knew this young man when he was growing up, and immediately when he graduated, he was a substitute teacher in his high school, and he would laugh about it because those were all his friends, and, and he knew, you know, that all he had was a high school diploma that was required of him, and, and, and here we are actually having to place some of these individuals in there. So what this bill attempts to do is that, and it's not limited, of course, to some of the, the topics that are listed for training, and this is not going to impact negatively in the, with GPSS for this fiscal, I mean, this school year, because it's not going to take effect until next school year, so it will give the department an opportunity then to, to start, to prepare itself and to set up some of these trainings. I know that they did it at one time when I was the school principal where we, I would actually do that for my substitute teachers, but it was only a one-day training, the day even before we opened. And so there is a list of topics to, to talk about, like classroom management, which is really critical, student discipline is another critical area, but then we need to talk about other issues that sometimes substitute teachers don't know that's required of all employees of the private education in particular when it deals with the suspicion of child abuse. So I, I, it's not something that's real controversial, Mr. Speaker, and I know that the superintendent definitely supports this, welcomes it as well, and feels that it'd be very beneficial for their students and teachers to have a properly trained substitute teachers. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. The next hand that went up was Senator Palacios.
Oh, one, can I, I'm sorry, I just forgot one more amendment, and my amendment is to, to please add Senator Rector also as a third cosponsor.
There being no objections, so ordered. Senator Palacios, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I rise in support of this bill. It's about time, Mr. Speaker, that this body recognize that the substitute teachers are more than just babysitters during the absence of the regular teachers, and that seemed to be the, not, not the attitude of this legislature, but that seemed to be the image of substitute teachers. And you know, the frequency of use of substitute teachers in the classroom is, is growing more and more, and I, my, to my knowledge, some of these substitute teachers would teach a classroom maybe like one whole week, and many of these substitute teachers, because they're substitutes, they teach a, a different classroom, in different classrooms. And I think with this minimal orientation training prior to any substitute teacher getting to the classroom, this are the courses that are a minimum, consists of classroom management, student discipline, and topics also to include, but not limited to health and safety issues, child abuse, harassment, sexual harassment, relationship with students, confidentiality, toward liability, substance abuse, and other things deemed appropriate by the superintendent. This will protect our, our children in the school, and of course, this government arising out of the conduct or misconduct of substitute teacher. Again, we have to treat these teachers as real teachers, short of all, of course, being certified as full-fledged teachers, but at least for their purpose, they should at least receive some minimal pre-employment orientational training. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thanks, Senator Palacios. Senator Munia Barnes.
Sisusmasi, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, thank you for, again, giving me the opportunity to speak and rise in support of Bill 156, and I'd like to thank the good Speaker for giving me the opportunity to be a part of her co-sponsorship here. Mr. Speaker, when, when we were having the public hearing on this bill, one of the questions that I asked the, the superintendent was based on the need and based on the wanting to make sure that our substitute teachers would be trained, I would ask, I asked if additional resources would be needed to implement such a training for, for all the substitute teachers, and her response was, of course, they would need, but additional resources. And her response was, of course, they would need additional resources eventually, but at this time, that they could, that this kind of programming for training could be integrated with programs that are currently in existence. And I just wanted to make sure that it was noted, because in her testimony, she said, since the training will not be required until the following year, it was important that we develop it in conjunction with other educational leaders and the training systems for the substitute teachers be in place, and knowing that there is a need for these substitute teachers to be trained in areas of health, safety issues, like the good Speaker noted, harassment, child abuse, sexual harassment, relationships with students, confidentiality, tort liability, substance abuse, nondiscriminational matters, and other topics that was identified by this, as identified by the superintendent, and maybe other things that could be incorporated into this training. I think that having this integrated into this program, I mean, into making sure that these substitute teachers are trained is doing the right thing for our students. So, Mr. Speaker, as I note, what was presented in the testimony and the support that all those who were present at that public hearing gave positive testimony, I think it's important that we look at this measure, get it implemented, and know that as this, as this training gets implemented with the substitute teachers, then we're sure that the protocols are in place so that our students, when being taught by substitutes, are being given that proper educational process. So, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak in support of this. And again, I'd like to ask that my colleagues support this measure, and again, thank the good Speaker, Juan Pat, for giving me the opportunity to be part of her co-sponsorship. Sisus Massey.
Thanks, Senator Barnes. Senator Taidegui, you're recognized.
Sisus Massey, Mr. Speaker, for allowing me to also stand and rise in support of this legislation. It's ironic, because back in 19 Forgotten, I was a substitute for a class in which I held this position for almost two months, and in that time was not given any training or even a seminar in which to handle the class, the classroom. So, I definitely commend the author of this bill for putting this forward as a person who was in that situation and position. But I also like to hope that the author, together, that we might include, maybe later on in another bill, to include the aides that are there at the schools, because sometimes in situations when there are not substitute teachers available, that aides are also brought into the classrooms to monitor the students, and sometimes they're in there for a couple days or three days, but even if they're in there for one minute, they should have the same training for each of these aides to be able to take care of the students in a proper, safe way. And I too stand in support of this bill and hope that we can put a bill out that will also have the inclusion of adding the school aides too as well for the training. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Senator Taidegui. Speaker Juan Pat, you're recognized, oh, I'm sorry, Senator Director.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I rise in full support of this bill, and as a proud number-three co-sponsor, once again, I have to speak in favor of it. You know, in most districts in the states, we have fully certified teachers acting as substitute teachers, and our children deserve no less. We should have fully certified teachers in every single classroom in the public school system, and we should also have fully certified substitutes. Because, look, teachers are human beings, too. They get sick sometimes, they have children, they get deployed in the military, things happen when they can't be in the classroom, and we don't want learning to be interrupted. Now, that being said, this is currently impractical for the people of Guam, and just wishing that something would be so does not make it so. What I like about this bill is it does the next best thing. At the very least, it gives these substitute teachers the tools that they need to be successful in the classroom right off the bat. You know, unless you've been in a classroom, unless you've been a teacher, it's really hard to understand how difficult it is to deal with 25 little bodies running around, to figure out how to get them to sit in their seat, and to realize that yelling at a kid and saying, "Sit down or I'm going to send you to the principal," only works in the movies. It doesn't really work in real life. Classroom management is an art as much as it is a science, and this training is going to help the substitute teachers do this, and as well, it's going to protect them. You know, one thing that might not even cross a substitute's mind, and sometimes it doesn't even cross a teacher's mind as well it should, is to be alone in a classroom with a student. This is the type of training that will protect them from these type of things. Now, that being said, the one difficulty I have with this is that this needs to be ongoing training. This needs to be something that every year, because we've had substitute teachers that have been subbing in our system now for a long time, plenty of years. And so, we want to make sure that every year they go back, at the very least, get a refresher course, which the board will determine. So, therefore, I'd like to proffer the following amendment on line nine to insert the word "annual" in between "undergo" and "training." So, now it will read, "GPSS shall undergo annual training prior to being placed in the classroom."
There being no objection, so ordered.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. And with that, I shall sit down. Thank you, once again.
Any other speakers before I recognize the main sponsor? Madam Speaker Juan Pat.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I would like my colleagues to support it, and the motion is to place it in the third reading file. Thank you very much.
Hearing no objection, so ordered. Will you or the majority leader be making a motion at this point? I don't see anything else on the agenda.
You're right, there really isn't, but I need to make a motion notwithstanding the House rules, and of course, you know, to ask that we reconsider the actions of this body when we sent Bill 82 down to the third reading, so my motion is notwithstanding the House rule, is to pull it right back up to second reading, because in the process of doing the enrolling of the bill, she noticed a technical correction that would need to be made. So, that's my motion.
Any objection to reconsidering the action on Bill 82? There being no objection, so ordered.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. So, what I'd like to do is go ahead and send out copies of the amendment that's recommended that we make, and it wasn't so much that it was a mistake of the body or whatever, it was actually existing legislation, which I didn't even touch, but in reviewing the legislation, there was supposed, what we want, what was suggested by legal counsel is that where we talk about defeat, that that's exactly what the topic would be about, but then when you come to not seeking reelection in the existing legislation, it actually moves on to the word defeat, and that's not the, it doesn't really belong there. So, what it is, is that Section 2 then is being sent around to replace what's in Section 2 of, page 2 of the bill, and it just actually corrects that section and brings it in line with the title.
Has everybody had a chance to review the proposed amendment?
Yes, I've reviewed.
Any objection to the proposed amendment?
No.
There being no objection to the proposed amendment, so ordered.
So, thank you, then, Mr. Speaker, and now the motion is to place it back down to the third reading file.
Senator, hearing no objection, it'll be so ordered. Mr. Majority Leader.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, we concluded everything in the second reading file, but if I may be permitted to make a motion to revert back to motions for purpose of placing a rules resolution, which amended the standing rules would have to be ratified by the body, so I make a motion to revert back to motions.
Any objection to moving back to? No objection, so ordered.
Thank you. We're in motions now, Mr. Speaker, and I move to place Resolution 109, sponsored by Senator Palacios and myself, and it's relative to amending the standing rule, and it basically takes the conservation officers of the Department of Agriculture under my jurisdiction of oversight and puts it under the law enforcement jurisdiction, which Senator Palacios has oversight. Make a motion to place this Resolution 109 in the second reading file.
Any senators wish to be heard on the proposed amendment?
No, just a motion to place to second.
Oh, on second?
Yeah.
No objection, so ordered.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Speaker. Now that we're in the second reading file, I've just explained a rules resolution that was unanimously adopted by the Committee on Rules. However, our rules require that changes to standing rules be ratified by the body, and so I ask senators to support this resolution. I want to thank Senator Palacios for recognizing that we must treat all law enforcement employees under one umbrella, and this resolution seeks to do just that, and so I move to place this resolution in the third reading file.
On that motion, are there any other senators that wish to be recognized? There being none, is there any objection to just moving this down to voting file?
No objection.
So ordered.
Thank you, Ms. Speaker. We have exhausted everything in the second reading file, and we're informed that the legal counsel and the clerk and the entire staff will have everything ready for us to vote 10:00 a.m. tomorrow, so I move to recess till 10:00 a.m. tomorrow, so we can come in and vote.
Will everything be ready at 10:00, or should we have it at a different hour?
We were advised that 10:00 would be sufficient.
All right, then, 10:00 tomorrow morning for voting. Thank you very much. We stand in recess until 10:00 tomorrow morning.